What is going on everybody? Today is a big day for Nick's Dance Presents because today I'm sitting down with Jen Thoreau. The uh, school board mem- part- part-time? I don't really know. How to, how to describe what happened up there?
Yeah, we can get there. I'll explain.
Okay, so why don't you explain now?
So everybody knows, okay. Um, I, my name is Jen Thoreau. I am a member of the Derry School Board currently. Um, I was appointed to the Derry School Board following a resignation this past fall. So I've been a member of the school board since November. And I am currently running for school board. This school board election is kind of a big one because for those of you that follow the school board, you already know this, it's a seven-person board. Right now, we have five open seats for election, which is kind of unheard of. Um, there were two resignations this fall. I filled one of those seats. The other person that filled one of those seats was Jenna Paradise. And there are three people whose terms are up. So those are three people that would be going up for election. Anyhow, those spots would be open.
And that's one of your spots, right?
No.
No.
One of my spots was the, it would be to finish this three-year term. So it's, so it's five school board seats that are open. There's three, three-year seats. And there are two, two-year seats to fill the remainder of the resignation terms, right? Um, and so there's five people who, you know, could be elected to school board that need to fill for our seven-person board.
In your, so I didn't, when I made these plans to have you and um, who, you know, the, some of the other people running on. Um, I was assuming that you guys would be running against each other, but you're not really running against each other now, right?
Right. So it's a little, it's a little tricky because there's two different races. There's a three-year seat race. That has three spots. And then there's a two-year seat race that has two spots and they're not running against each other. So if you're running for two years, oh, I'm getting, okay, if you're running for two years, this is. For those of you that are sitting at home, can they see everybody at home? Alright, so now I'm planning uh, Only Up.
So this one, this is, that's controls. This is.
Usually Mario Kart type of person, so this is new to me.
And then this is jump.
Oh, this is like, okay, well, yeah. I'm gonna end up falling really far.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, okay, so there's five seats. There's a three-year race, there's a two-year race. Um, I just jumped all the way down here.
That's okay.
The three-year race has three people in it. Which, you know, it's me and Brenda Willis and a woman named Karen Ran. Um, Brenda is currently a longtime member of the school board.
Everybody loves Brenda.
Everybody loves Brenda and um, it's great to have Brenda back in. Um, I don't know Karen very well, but she's, you know, shown interest in being on the school board as well. I respect and admire anyone. Who wants to try and make a difference on that front.
So that's kind of a cheat. If you climb on that thing, it'll take you way, way high up.
Take this back for me, because I'm like a, you know, I'm like a little embarrassing myself here. And then there's the two-year race. So you have three people who have put their hat in the ring for um, or thrown their hat in the ring for the two-year race. You have Jenna Paradise, um, Jamie Carew and Richard Tripp. Richard Tripp's a state rep. People may know who Richard Tripp is.
Jamie ran for state rep too.
Jamie ran for state rep, that's right.
And didn't Jenna run for state rep at one point, or was that, am I mistaken about that?
I think you're mistaken. I don't want to be quoted, but I don't think Jenna's ever run for state rep. Jenna's very involved in town.
Yeah.
Initiatives and trying to make Derry a better place for all of us. So that's a good thing. Um, so we'll see how it all shakes out.
We love that.
We love that, yeah, we love that. We'll see how it shakes out. Um, but yeah, that's kind of how.
So the three open seats will be filled by you, Karen and Brenda?
Yes, presumably.
Cause no one else, it's like the sign up is over, right?
Nobody else is running. I mean, the filing period ended on Friday.
Oh, I guess there could still be a writing.
I mean, I suppose there could be somebody that steps up with a writing campaign. Um, you know, that's tough to pull off under any circumstances, but yes.
It's not gonna be me.
It won't be Nick Sands. Um, but that's kind of where we're at, so.
And how did you get involved in school board in the first place? Like, how did you end up appointed?
Um, well, okay. I mean, like a lot of things I've done in my life, Nick, I feel like school board chose me probably more than I actually chose it. And um, I guess what I mean by that is to give everybody a little bit of background and to give you a little bit of background. Cause this is our first time meeting in real life today. Um, I've lived in Derry for 15 years. And I've owned a home in Derry.
We should say it's possible we met previously.
It's possible we've met.
We went to high school together.
Nick and I graduated from the same high school. I am.
Was it a year?
Uh, I graduated in 2008, from, or no, 2004, sorry. I graduated from 2008 from UNH.
Okay, so you're two years older than me?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Wow, you're old.
I, yes, I am coming up on 39 this year. Yes, let's highlight that. Um, so.
I'm sitting at a young, strapping 37.
Yes.
So I'm still.
What I would give to be 37. I'd say that, okay, so I've lived in Derry for 15 years. I've owned a home in Derry with my husband for 13 years. We now have three kids. Two of whom go to Derry Public Schools. One's a third grader, one's a first grader at East Derry. My son is up and coming. He'll be in kindergarten next year at East Derry. Um, currently in pre-K, which I told Nick, you know, we are on a timeline for that this morning, because I have to pick him up from preschool. Um, but I have three young children with my husband. And that's just a little bit of background about myself, because I think it's relative. I mean, it's, I'm a concerned parent in town is really what the bottom line is in terms of why I'm interested in school board. But then on the professional front and on the, you know, a little bit of like background about myself and why I'm interested in this. I think I have uh, experiences and knowledge and a background that really lends itself well to the work of the Derry School Board. Nick referenced, I did graduate from high school with Nick.
Very impressive.
Very impressive. Um, I went on to UNH in Durham. I got a BA in English. I graduated from there in 08. Um, I didn't really know, I mean, the, you know, it's a big joke. What are you gonna do? Work at the English Factory? And you know, I didn't end up working at the English Factory. I ended up working, my first job out of college was working at New England College, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I got.
As like a teacher?
No, I got hired, um, and I'm, and I'm so pleased I had that experience because, oh, okay, here we go. I worked at New England College in academic support, okay? So it's part of like their academic.
So if you just let it drive you. I tried to give you an easy spot.
I don't even have to do anything like that, it's perfect. Um, I worked in academic support and I did that for four years. I really thought that that would be a path for me to become a teacher. Um, because I was interested in teaching. I wanted to either become a public school teacher or work in an independent school. Um, during the summer while I worked at New England College, I used to teach at Brewster Academy um, to English language learners from Thailand. So I was really thinking, you know, I'll be a teacher and I even applied to a job at Brewster. Got offered a job at Brewster, decided not to do that, thought maybe I'll do public school teaching instead. I know, Nick's really, he's laughing at my.
No, I like it. This is, this is why.
Video game skills.
Not enough people play video games. I basically do this podcast to give myself an excuse to have.
Well, here I am, stepping up.
For a couple hours a day.
If we were playing Mario Kart, I might be more impressive.
Well, you didn't give me that as an option.
I didn't know what my choices were. It's okay. I can roll with it. I can roll with it. Um, so I worked at New England College for four years. I, while I was there, part of the benefit of working in higher education is you can get, you can take courses, right? So I was working towards a master of education degree. So I have a master of education degree in curriculum instruction. Um, ultimately, that did not pan out. I found out during my time at New England College, working in academic support. That I was much more interested in heading into a career in mental health. And the reason for that was because I kept seeing students who were very bright, very capable, struggling in college. Either with the transition college or maybe just in general. And I'm gonna give this back to Nick, because I don't know what I'm doing.
You just got through the part that was easy.
I was seeing kids who were struggling in college. They were bright, they were capable, and they just weren't doing well. And a lot of it had to do with things that we couldn't address on the academic support front. You know, they were struggling with home life issues, family of origin issues, um, drug or alcohol, mental illness, whatever it might be. Obviously, I'm not skilled in those areas, but it became more apparent to me that that's where I felt called to do some work. And so the same year that I graduated from New England College with my master of ed, I actually started another master's degree at.
Why not? Boy, if I had known it was gonna be so humiliating to have you on, I probably would have.
I left the job and I graduated the same year. This was 2012. And I decided I'm gonna go to BU, Boston University, for my master of social work degree. And I worked, so the vast majority of my professional work has been in, in mental health. I was at BU for two years full-time. Um, social work school was an amazing experience because it really felt so aligned with what I felt called to do. Again, a calling, right? We talked, like, you asked at the beginning, why school board? Because I'm being called, I feel like I'm being called to do it. You know, I have this background that I think lends itself well to it. Um, when I was at Boston University, I had two internships. I interned for a year at Families in Transition in Manchester. So I worked a lot with young homeless families who were struggling. This was about 10 years ago, so keep in mind. Demographics have changed. Um, the homelessness problem is still very much a problem um, in Manchester. Uh, but it was different times. This is like a pre-COVID world, right? Um, but I got exposure working with that population. Got some exposure to working with how to support students who are in school, who are going through that, those life challenges. Um, with like the McKinney-Vento Act, which is the act that supports um, homeless students. So I have that knowledge that I bring to the table. And then my second year, I worked at Elliot Hospital as an intern and I worked behavioral health. Which is a term, mental health, uh, all kind of under the same bracket. And I also did some medical social work there as well, so I got to see some things. Graduated from there, went on to work at Manchester Mental Health. And I was doing emergency room assessments at the Elliot and CMC ER. And then did that for a handful of years. My life continues to chug on. At this point, I think I have a couple of kids.
Isn't it weird how like the first kid is like, by like the time, I mean, I only have two kids, but. Man, I feel like I've forgotten so much of like, just in the day-to-day life of like, running your life with two kids. It's so much different than one kid.
Well, yeah, but you're, what you're drawing attention to is my capacity to work in that environment was starting to get diminished. As my life demands at home became, became greater, right? Um, I, I loved the work in the ER, fast-paced.
That actually, I can barely handle making YouTube videos and having two kids. I couldn't imagine also dealing with like.
Emergency room work.
Working in an emergency room and trying to determine how people, like, what people need, as far as mental health is concerned.
Um, I think it's funny because when you get accustomed to that work, it becomes, I mean, my role was very defined there, you know? I would see patients who were coming in and mental health crisis and would work with the team in the ER to develop a plan. Um, sometimes that's more straightforward in and of itself, sometimes than what I'm demanded of at home, right? Like, home is just kind of your own circus. When I left the ER, I was like, well, I can leave that there. I gotta go back to my own thing now. Um, which can be in a lot of ways more stressful, right? Um.
Dude, being, being a stay-at-home parent is without a doubt the most stressful, most difficult job I've ever had in my life.
I, I concur. Um, yeah, because, so, so one of the paths, I mean, you have to become licensed. Or you don't have to be, but to become licensed, to practice therapy independently in New Hampshire, you need to become independently licensed. So I was working on that during my time at Manchester Mental Health. I passed my board exams for that, gained all the experience I needed to for that. So I earned my LICSW. That's a license of independent clinical social work. So Nick's laughing, because.
I just feel like I pumped in a lot of extra, like, I always hear about like, people are like, oh, she's got a whole bunch of letters after her name. I feel like that one. Adds so many letters, it's almost not fair.
Five, yeah, it's a lot.
Five letters is a lot, you know?
Yeah.
I feel like they could have broken that up.
Yeah, maybe.
The kind of cheat code.
Always trying to add more letters to after my name, yes. Um, but then an opportunity popped up to work at Pinkerton as a school social worker. So now I get kind of excited about that prospect because it's kind of combining the two paths that I have, right? The background in schools and um, this small background I suppose I had in schools, as well as the mental health piece on the school front. Um, and it gave me an opportunity to exit the ER for, for good, which was good for where I was at in my life with two very young kids. Um, and I worked at Pinkerton for a year and a half before I had to leave. Um, and I had a good experience there, getting to see how schools work. People who are listening to this are probably in Derry, right? Or maybe.
Maybe, it's the internet.
It's the internet, okay, it's out on the net, well.
I have, I have viewers who will probably watch this in other countries.
Well, Pinkerton is uniquely positioned because it is um, like a semi-private school, right? Like, Derry and the surrounding sending towns to Pinkerton pay tuition for the students to go there. So I, during my time there, I got to learn a lot about the way that the Derry School District operates alongside Pinkerton, right? Cause I'm working at Pinkerton on the inside. But then as well, I'm learning a lot about the special education process. Um, I got to see the IEP process underway. I used to sit in a lot of those meetings. Um, so it was really, really helpful to learn about all that. And again, bring this knowledge now to the Derry School Board. I left that job um, in December 2019. I am now on the personal front, I don't mind sharing this, I have two kids, I am pregnant. Six months pregnant, I think, almost six months pregnant. And I, my daughter was diagnosed with leukemia. Um, and so leukemia, the type of leukemia she was diagnosed with um, was a 26-month course of treatment, Nick. So we're talking like a marathon.
Two years, yeah.
Yeah, just over two years.
And how, how many times a week is that course of treatment?
Oh geez. You know, it varied, um.
I actually lost a friend to leukemia, uh, when I was, when he was 18, he ended up passing.
I'm sorry.
Of leukemia, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I know how, what a struggle it was. I saw what he went through and I know how difficult that, um, cause there's a lot of stuff that comes along, well, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you, but. A lot of stuff that comes like, along with that, like, just like a normal, just like a normal cold at that point can be devastating to.
Right, well, yes, I mean, and you make a, you make a good point because as all of your listeners know. Globally, we went through a really big thing in 2020, if you may recall. Yeah, it was quite the year, you know? Um, especially when you have a kid going through cancer treatment and you're pregnant. And so it was within a matter of just a few months, I had one of my, one of my daughters was diagnosed with leukemia. I'm six months pregnant. Um, Gracie ended up at Boston Children's Hospital for seven weeks, was discharged on Valentine's Day 2020.
Is Gracie the child with leukemia?
Gracie had leukemia and Gracie, just to be clear, before we even go any further, is doing phenomenally now. She has been cancer-free for five years. We just had a very major appointment last week for that. Um, and so I'm thrilled that she's just thriving. Um, but let me tell you, those, that, that period of time was. I guess I'll use the term catastrophic. It was just like having your life turned upside down to the point where you don't recognize it anymore.
That must have been extra difficult being pregnant, because I would imagine that you're not even allowed into the treatment room with.
I was, I could care for her still. Oh, she didn't have radiation. It was all chemotherapy.
I thought chemo was like radiation.
Two different things.
Okay.
We'll have to, part two will be about.
Okay, okay.
About what that was all about.
We'll plan a part two.
Yeah, we'll have to do a part two. Um, so I, you know, had my, and I had, so Gracie got diagnosed, global pandemic starts mid-March. I have been on April 1st, 2020. Now I'm no longer working and I have not returned to work since. I've been fortunate because I've been able to prioritize my family and home life for a very long time, when it was necessary and truly needed. Um, and like I said, Gracie was in treatment for over two years. She's doing phenomenally now. But when treatment ended in February 2022, it was sort of a long off-ramp to regular life, or whatever regular life is. Um.
Yeah, I would imagine that must have been.
Oh yeah, I mean, we're talking like you're exiting very slowly back to a sense of what normalcy is. We're now a family of five. We're now living in a post-pandemic world. You know, my oldest has started school, public school. She's at East Derry. Um, and so again, to relate it all back to why I was gonna be called to be the school board member. I mean, my background just, I think, makes sense for it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and as I've, over the past year or so, really been able to concentrate on things outside that house and my family life. I've been educating myself more about what's been going on in the Derry schools, what's been going on at the state level for education. Um, and it's just been kind of a rabbit hole that I've fallen down.
Easy one to fall down, because it goes back so long.
It does.
A lot of the problems that we're facing today go back 20 years.
A lot of the problems we've been facing today go back for a very long time. And I've been trying to educate myself, you know, a year ago at this time, I was reading articles after the kids went to bed and I'd be like, huh, that was, that's a weird thing. Like, why aren't we fully funding inadequate education at the state level? And, you know, why? What, a, a good example, you know, we had such upheaval recently in the Derry schools for restructuring. And, you know, obviously the school closure of DVS um, caused a lot of people to be concerned about that. And to also wonder what's going on. This has been also a long time coming, I think, that Derry's had to really kind of have a reckoning with where we're at with our facilities. Um, so a year ago at this time, I'm just kind of learning more about what's going on. In June of last year, because it's what, 2025 now, we've entered a new year.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're in a new year. June of last year, um, the New Hampshire Fair Funding Project came to Derry. And I'd say that that really kind of galvanized me.
Big word.
Yeah, it energized me, right? Like, they, they're, they came and they spoke about what state-level funding is like in New Hampshire for public education. They're a group that's um, advocating on that front in Concord. And it relates directly to Derry and it relates directly to Derry taxpayers and to the students in our town who are going to public schools. Um, and I just, it became more and more clear, Nick, that if somebody was gonna do this work, it was probably gonna have to be me. Because I just felt very compelled to contribute to it, right? Um, and so as the summer went on, I thought, well, yeah, I'm gonna start laying some groundwork for like a campaign. I wanna educate myself. I want to get a tour of the facilities at school. I wanna meet with district leadership. I reached out to Dr. Garofalo and uh, Mr. Joe Crawford, who were kind enough to sit down with me in the fall. Um, I wanted to get through all the administrators and start talking with them.
So you did a lot of work before you even.
Oh, yes. Nick, this will be a theme. I mean, if you notice, yes, I feel very strongly that if I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it thoughtfully. I'm going to do it wholeheartedly. I am going to do it um, with a sense of clarity. That what I have to contribute is really going to be meaningful.
We could not be more opposite in that regard, because when I do stuff, I just have, I just say, alright, I'm gonna do it now.
Yeah, point shooting.
Yeah, just kind of shoot from the hip and hope for the best.
Maybe my fail flaw might be that I sit there and aim a little bit too long, I suppose. And um, when it came down to doing this groundwork, at, at concurrently while that's happening, uh, there was a board resignation. And there was a process in place per bylaw with the student, uh, the school board. You know, the board members, the remaining board members would appoint a person to take that seat. And people would have to submit letters to be of interest, right? You submit a letter of interest and the school board decides who they're going to have fill the seat. Um, I thought long and hard about that one too, because I knew that an appointment to an elected position. People might not like that one, you know, having somebody fill in a, a seat, an elected seat with an appointment. Um, but again, there were bylaws in place that clearly state the process and I gave it a lot of thought. At that point, I'd already met with district leadership. I had met with um, Jeremy Lamath. He is the director of facilities. He took me on a tour over the course of a few days of every school in the whole district. Um, so I got to see some of the concerns that he has on the facilities front. And it just became more and more and more clear that I have done all of my homework and if anybody is going to do this, it should be me. It should be me to step up to do it. And I decided, alright, I'll submit a letter. Somebody's going to fill that spot and I felt strongly that if it was gonna be somebody, then it should be me. Um, and that's how I got appointed to the Derry School Board. And now I'm running for Derry School Board, so. Long answer, I care. Well, that was the long answer. The short answer is I care, yeah.
I mean, I think, one, I think that you definitely sound like you're qualified to do it. Two, I, you know, our school board especially is like the worst job that I could possibly imagine. I would never run for Derry School Board. It seems terrible, uh, you know, it's never, they never get an applause, you know? It's uh, you know, for better or worse, it's, it's a lot of arguing and a lot of just like not positive affirmations coming your way. Uh, and so I would never do it. Anyone who, anyone who's willing to sign up to essentially walk into a meat grinder, I applaud.
I think that was a term, yeah, that was a term you have used previously. You said, I don't know why you signed up to walk into the meat grinder. I mean, um, did I sign up for it again? I feel called to walk into the meat grinder. And um, I see it as my duty to walk into the meat grinder. And again, the bottom line is, um, I care deeply about the schools in town. And I care about our students and our teachers being able to have the tools and resources that they need to be able to really excel. And so if I can move the needle at all.
If you can slow down the meat grinder.
Yeah, if I can slow, exactly, if I can jam up the meat grinder, that would be what the hope is in my contribution to Derry School Board. Um, I do think, and, and you're, you're saying that as somebody that has run for town council, so you know.
Yeah, but town council is different, I think. Town council is different. Town council, there's a tax cap for one. And so it's really just more like, you already know what the budget is, you already know, like, it's more, I feel like making the pieces fit. And there's also, uh, you know, sometimes the town council does good stuff. Or like.
As opposed to the Derry School Board.
No, I mean, I think they, they do good things and people perceive it as good, as opposed to the Derry School Board, I feel like, um, can never win. I, I mean, every time I hear someone bring up the Derry School Board, it's never, it's never in a positive light.
Sure. Um, well, I hope, I mean, you're bringing up a fair point. I think that, um. I think that that's, there's certainly room to improve in that area always. I do think that the reason people feel so strongly about Derry School Board and maybe school boards in general, in whatever town you live in. Is because this is something that people find to be something that they really want to have. Um, it's an important piece, right, of their life. Like, they really feel strongly about this. You don't, if you don't feel strongly about something, you're not gonna get upset about it.
Right.
Um, and so I think that that's a big driver of it. And then the nature of decision-making is just that you're not going to make everybody happy and unfortunately, um. It is a big ask for the school board because you're asking them to balance the needs of the students, the needs of the teachers. Um, with the, with the very real concerns of the taxpayers, of course. Um, it is certainly a balancing act. And I think that that balancing act is a lot more nuanced sometimes than people really can fully appreciate. Um, and from what I've seen in the very short time that I'm on there, decisions don't get made quickly, right? And so I think that that can be a frustrating thing, because it can be a very bureaucratic, bureaucratic process. But also by design, that means nothing's done like Nick Sands-style point-shoot aim, right? Like willy-nilly. Um, I think there's a time and place for that, but you know, certainly there's opportunity um, for people to have their voice heard, I think. Um, if you get involved and you, you know, you wanna go to the meetings and, and be heard.
I definitely think there's an opportunity for people to have their voice heard. Um, I think that, you know, I actually think the school board does a great job. Um, you know, is it already, is it, is every decision that the school board makes what I think is the ideal? No, but at the same time, it's like, the public school system is arguably like, probably the greatest invention of, you know, the last 100 years. So like, is there a lot, is there a lot that goes into it? Absolutely. There's a ton that goes into, into, you know. Educating children on a grand massive scale. And I think that the reason that the town, that the school board gets a lot of heat is because they, um, you know, you're dealing with people's kids. Yep. It's like on the town council, you deal with like the garbage, you know, you deal with like the transfer station, you deal with like.
Garbage, yes.
Parks, you deal with like that kind of thing, balancing that budget, but like, and people get, definitely get worried about money. And they are, have very legitimate concerns about the things that the town handles, but like, none of it is. When you start comparing it to dealing with the children's, you're like my child's future, is essentially meaningless, anything else. Is essentially meaningless. Anything else, anything outside of that is almost like, you know, you don't even almost care about it when it, when the. Alternative is like, I need to worry about my kid's future, or what I perceive as like my kid's future, so. Yeah, I just think that the, the. The emotional investment in having a solid school system is massive. Um, and so I think people do get very emotional about it and it's one of those things where like when school's working good. You're like, hell yeah, I got no complaints. But when something goes sideways, you're like, that's my child, you know, so I need to. I need to step up and uh, you know. Make whatever is happening to my child, like, stop happening.
Well, yes, and it's, it's emotionally charged. You're talking about your kids, you're talking about your kids' future.
A lot of money.
A lot of money, absolutely. We're talking about the town, um.
I am personally the kind of person who believes, like, I would, I mean. I want my taxes, if like all of my tax dollars go to a school for my kid, like, as far as I'm concerned, that's like the best investment I can make. Um, you know, it takes, it takes like, if you've talked to a dumb person for twenty minutes, you know how painful it is to talk to a dumb person, it's like. There's just less dumb people in the world, like, as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, it's better. So like, I'm all for funding public education as much as we can. And I'm one of the uh rare ones who is even like, well, you know, do I love the, do I love the voucher program? And the cost of the voucher program, no. But if the outcome is better education for kids, then like how, I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna be too mad about it, you know what I mean?
Yes, I do hear you.
So to me, it's like, as long as we're educating the population. At a better level than we were before, to me, that that is.
That's a win.
That's a win. And if it costs more money than I want to spend on it, well. You know, I also don't, didn't wanna put a roof on my house last year, but I had to pay for it.
Yeah, and you know, and, and the, the size and scope of what we're dealing with on the school board front is, oh my gosh, here we go. The size and scope of what you deal with on the school board front is uh. Is pretty massive. I mean, you just kind of said, you know, you're talking about students' futures, making sure teachers and. Uh, have all the resources and tools that they need to do their job well, making sure they have all the professional development opportunities to do their job well. Making sure they feel supported in doing their job and empowered to do their job. Um, I also think that, am I just writing right now? Um, and then on top of that, you know, you bring up roofs of your house, then you have some roofs that, you know, right now. We're, we have uh facilities that really need uh to be up kept. Am I gonna stop? Uh, these are a lot of buttons. It was never this complicated when I used to do this sort of thing as a.
As a youth.
Back in my day. Yeah, back when I wasn't. I was gonna say, back when I wasn't thirty nine, almost. I'm not almost forty, I'm almost thirty nine. Yes, so then you're competing also against, you know, the, the facilities front. I don't know how, you must have to train yourself to, like.
You just keep good.
There are two things right here, like two joystick things. That seems like a lot. My kids have a Nintendo Switch and there's one joystick thing, like, how do you? A different topic, again, we have different topics we can address. I'll come back. I just, I didn't mean to do that. I'm now falling very far down. Um, we'll have to figure this out another time.
Alright, I'll take it back.
Yeah, take it, I'm sorry, climb back up and put me on a conveyor belt and I won't, I won't move next time.
One of the biggest comments that I got on this is gonna be, why did you play video games the whole time when she was talking?
Yeah, we wanna hear more from John Thoreau. Um, what were we saying? We were saying, you were talking about vouchers, you were talking about. Yes, so you know, these are all the things that.
Well, I think one of the, so let me interrupt you there. I'm really good at doing that anyways. I think, you know, from the standpoint of like the taxpayer, it's like um. We haven't been keeping up with our schools. We haven't been keeping up for with the, with the repairs that needed to be done.
Yep, that is correct.
Um, but I think from the, from the standpoint of people on the outside looking in, I think one of the big. Things that I've noticed personally and also that we've seen is like. You have a lot of great ideas when you're sitting on the outside and you're, and you're looking at it and you haven't. And you don't have the numbers in front of you. You're not sitting with all of the paperwork. You haven't sifted, spent, you know, twenty hours a week sifting through all this paperwork. To then go to these other six people and like bring your ideas forward. And I think, cuz like you'd hear a lot of people talk about like, how do we cut the budget? How do we cut the budget?
How do we cut the budget?
How do you cut the budget? And everybody has an idea of how they would cut the budget, but it seems like the, what, like, everybody has the idea of how they would cut the budget. And then when they actually get in there. They're like, oh, well, I guess, I guess you actually can't cut the budget too much more.
So, I'm happy you brought that up because I told you that I like to be really thoughtful about what I do. Part of what I did. In an effort to educate myself in preparing for a potential school board run before I was even appointed. I applied to be, or I, I don't even know if it's an application. I, I, I put in a. I guess an application to be on fiscal advisory committee. So fiscal advisory committee is a committee that works alongside the school board and S A U leadership to develop the school budget, right? Um, you heard my background, Nick. Accounting is not it, finance is not it, budget is not it. That's not me. That's not what I bring as a strong suit to the school board, but I figured.
Well, you noticed a hole and you filled it. Like, you noticed a gap in your, in your resume and you were like, well, this is on week.
Precisely. So at the end, I think it was like end of spring and anyone that's listening right now that is a dairy voter or. Can, can be on fiscal, Nick, you could be on fiscal advisory, I think. If you wanna come to a bunch of meetings at the end of the fall or mid fall, late fall. Uh, at the end of this year, we would be happy to have people join if you'd like to contribute.
I didn't realize you were also on the fiscal advisory board.
Well, I was on fiscal advisory as a way to really educate myself on the school budget, cuz I know that this is not a strength of mine. I, I know that that's not something that I'm bringing in. Um, as a strength to the school board. I wanted to know what was going into the budget, some of the things that you talked about. What are the controllables? What are the things that we can maybe have an impact on? When you sit through the fiscal advisory process, particularly like myself, someone who doesn't have a background in accounting or finance or. You know, I'm not a money person, um, the budget, you know, we have a over a hundred million dollar budget. Which, you know, gasp, right? Hundred million dollars, um, it's a lot of money, absolutely. What you're highlighting, I think, Nick, is like. So many of those costs are fixed. And that makes it really hard. So, you know, we don't have one of the reasons.
Give me like an example of something that is fixed that people may not realize is like a fixed cost?
Um, sure, so, we pay tuition for Pinkerton, right? Pinkerton students, dairy students that go to Pinkerton are. Uh, you know, we pay a tuition for them to go there. Um, we don't dictate the cost of what Pinkerton costs. We have. Pretty little control over that, right? Um, and so, our students in Derry benefit greatly from the education that they get at Pinkerton. Uh, but it's not something that we have control over in our budget. So that's, you know, right off the table, pretty much. Special education costs are, you know, mandated federally. So we are required to provide and we should absolutely be providing. Um, a robust special education services in our district. Um, I feel very passionately about that as well. I don't mind sharing that my daughter has an I E P.
My son also has an I E P.
Your son has an I E P too? Okay, so, these are students that we need to be serving and we. You know, any of that is really off the table. Nobody can come in with their, you know, their axe or whatever, meat grinder. Um, and say, we're gonna throw a special ed into the bucket. That's just not going to happen.
Not only can it not, it's, it's illegal, you couldn't.
Right, precisely. So you know, those are sorts of things. Oftentimes, what happens is, you know. At the end, as you go through this budget process and you're trying to think, well, what can we do to maybe get the budget below default? So that we're saving the taxpayer some money. Um, we're kind of like hacking at the leaves, so to speak. Like, there's just few things that you can maybe cut here or there to really. Bring the budget down a bit to maybe see some sort of difference. Um, and unfortunately, what I kind of took away from the, my first budget season. Now, keep in mind, I joined fiscal advisory as a committee member during that process of. Going through the fiscal advisory budget process, I became a school board member because I got appointed. There aren't many things you control and one of the things that often gets cut right away are facilities issues, right? So that's why, year upon year, year upon year upon year. When you're cutting and you're not, you don't have the ability to put money towards like a capital reserves fund, so that you have these abilities to tackle projects as they pop up. Um, you're kind of digging yourself in a hole longer term.
Right.
It kind of reminds me, Nick, you know, as I'm saying that out loud, I'm thinking about. My social work background and what I kind of think of as the cost of being poor, right? When you're living day to day and when you're living paycheck to paycheck and you don't have any traction below you, it's truly survival. To just get food on the table and pay rent to have a roof over your head, it becomes incredibly difficult. To plan long term.
Right.
Nobody's gonna come up to you and be like, why don't you have more four O one K contribution?
Right.
Because that's just not a priority and.
There's also the, there's also the, so when you say the, the cost of being poor, there's a good example of that is like, when you have. Um, a pair of boots and you buy a pair of boots and you can buy the ten dollar pair of boots and they'll only last you a month. But you can buy the twenty dollar pair of boots and they'll last you a year. But you have, when you have to buy the ten dollar pair of boots, cuz you also need to eat. Um, you end up spending way more because you don't have the ability to um, to invest in the better thing.
You don't have, yep, and we're seeing that play out right now. I mean, um. The result of sort of not being able to put money towards those types of facilities issues longer term within the budget because we've always been working at or below default. Is that we have facilities that are really in the need of upgrading. Um, you know, West Running Brook right now has like this crumbling brick facade. Facade, from what I understand, is like a fancy term, yeah, it's a fancy word.
The front of a building.
For the front of a building, right? So like the outside of the building, right? We're talking like the building envelope. Um, there was a time when, my understanding is that when that project was, when West Running Brook was being built. You know, they could have had like a granite facade. Granite, I don't know if you know, Nick, costs a lot of money. And so that idea got cut.
Reason I have uh pressed wood.
A pressed wood facade?
There is a reason that I have, um, I don't have granite countertops, I have whatever, Formica or whatever.
Right, well, exactly, and you know, um. We probably wouldn't be in this situation if West Running Brook had a granite facade, but it's just not something that we could have invested in at that time.
Right.
Um, and you go, you know, these situations, these decisions get made year upon year. The board. Um, aside from Brenda, has changed over the years and there has been in the recent past some longer term members. Who are constantly trying to move the needle forward, but you are up against a lot. And I think that decisions get made. Unfortunately, um, nothing really happens, like, everything's interconnected, right? Um, and at the end of the day, clearly, we need buildings where, that are safe to send the students to school in, safe to send the teachers to school in. Um, and we also, the primary job of a school is to educate.
Right.
You know, and so, we're balancing all these things. One of the other things that tends to get the axe is um curriculum programming, right? Um, and it becomes hard to invest long term in curriculum programming when you're constantly trying to like. Cut at the sides that you can cut, you know? Um, that's something I hope that, you know, should I win on March eleventh? Um, and well, you know, there's gonna be an election. I hope to be able to move the needle on that front as well. You know, I think of our. In terms of the curriculum in our, our school district, I met with, do you know who Kim Conan is?
No.
Okay, so Kim Conan is the director of curriculum and grants within the dairy school. She works in like the S A U office. You know where the S A U office is. Okay, yeah, that building's falling apart too.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
Well, it's like old.
Yeah.
So I'm like, let, so I'll be honest with you, I'm less concerned about the S A U building, I'm more concerned I hear like. They had to evacuate children because a pipe burst.
To be clear, I think the S A U office is less concerned about the S A U office than the remaining of the buildings, right? Um, I just say that because, yeah, it's right on twenty eight. Who, for anyone internationally might be listening. Twenty eight's a very busy artery through our town, right? Um, but I met with Kim Conan in the S A U office because I wanna know more about the curriculum piece. And um, she sat down with me yesterday, we talked about, hmm, we talked about a lot of things and actually. Uh, we talked about curriculum and the need to also improve our school districts. Um, test scores, right? Do you watch school board meetings, Nick?
Sometimes.
Okay, um. I don't say that, I, I mean, because I'm.
They're very long and boring. So like, a lot of times I'll listen to them like a podcast where I just like have them running in the background while I'm doing something else.
I, that's how I often listen to school board meetings when I started to become more interested in this, like, literally a year ago at this time, I would put it on and it would be in my ears. While I was doing something else.
It's also kind of like a soap opera because it's like if you missed last week's episode, it's like you don't, this week's episode doesn't really make any sense. So like, you can like jump in or like wrestling, it's like if you watch wrestling and you're like, wait, why, why is Hulk Hogan?
Why is?
You know what I mean? Like, why is, why is this happening? I don't understand what happened last week.
Why is the Undertaker now on, not on the dark side or something?
Exactly, and then you gotta like go into, then you gotta go into the Facebook comments too, so like you can't just watch the episode. To get the both sides, how everybody interpreted it. So then you can kind of pull in your own interpretation.
There is a fair amount of people um weighing in on all of it online, you're right. Um, all twelve people that watch the school board meetings. Are weighing in. I mean, um, you're right, it is boring. I think that that's part of the reason too that this.
The worst soap opera of all time.
Hating on all of my hobbies and things I like to do for fun. Um, I think, I mean.
I'm just joking, I'm just.
No, I know you're joking. I do. I, and I think you care, Nick, and I, I'm, I'm happy to be sitting here with somebody that does care because I think we both. You know, we are both trying to move things forward a bit. And, but you're right, it's boring, it's bureaucratic. Um, I get concerned.
Please don't compare me trying to move things forward by, by sitting here playing video games while you talk about it.
True, you're giving me a platform to talk about it, if nothing else.
Compared to like doing math on the budget or any of the hard stuff that actually needs to happen. Like comparing me. Like, this is the best I got, guys, I'm sorry.
Strengths forward, Nick, and that's what I think is a good thing.
I could talk a lot, I'm pretty loud. Like, that's, that's really my two skills that I bring to the table.
Well, you know, I think, I think the school board stuff, a lot of people, a lot of parents, I think. And, and maybe you can speak to this, I think a lot of parents. Um, are living very, very busy lives. They can't tune into the boring, long, soap opera school board stuff and they don't. And I would like, and I hope, in some way, we can get more involvement because. Parents are so critical, right, to, to the health of our school district and to our community anyway. Their kids are going to school here and um, oftentimes, I don't know if you've noticed. But, the people who routinely attend school board meetings or even speak at school meetings are not parents in town, right? They're um, they're people who maybe care about the community or they care about the taxpayer's wallet. Um, but they're not vested in this situation because they have kids in it, right? Um, and you and I, being uh a spry thirty seven and coming up on thirty nine. We're ve- very busy. I know it doesn't seem that way right now, the dairy public library, but we are and it becomes hard to stay in. Engaged in this, right? Um, and I, my hope would be to get more people involved. One of the things that I know that.
Well, I think that's, so let me just interrupt you there, at least from my perspective, like, that is the point of voting. Like, my, the reason that I go out, you know, it's like, it's like a trade off, like, I don't really have to pay that much attention. Because I go out and I vote for people who I believe are putting my, and like, I gotta check in, you know what I mean, make sure everybody's doing what, what they said they were gonna do. But like, I don't need to, like, that's, that's why we have a system in which we vote, is that you vote people in who. You theoretically should be able to trust to do the things that they say they do, they're gonna do, um, and to do it to the best of their ability. You know, I, do I agree with every decision that the school board has made? No, but I believe that everybody on the school board. Has more or less been there for the right reasons and, you know, with the ultimate goal of like moving the dairy school board forward. Or the dairy school forward, within their limited means of doing so.
Nick, this is, I like what you just said.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, I think, I would a hundred and ten percent agree, like, what's frustrating, I think, and you're someone like, we've talked about earlier. You ran for town council, uh, twenty twenty.
Two.
Two, okay. You know, these town elections don't get people out. I know it's hard to believe. There, the day of the town election, there is not going to be a.
A hundred and forty eight people voted between me and Brian Chertella and I lost. A hundred and forty eight people voted between me and Brian Cheretella and I lost by twelve votes.
A hundred and forty eight?
Yeah. Yeah, less impressive now that I lost by twelve votes, huh? You were so impressed earlier.
I'm impressed that you ran for town council, I truly am. But what I was gonna say is that that day won't jam up twenty eight and Pinkerton's traffic situation.
In my district, a hundred and forty eight in my district. I think there was thirteen hundred that came out for all the districts, but in my district.
Really low, but it was your district, yeah.
A hundred and forty eight people voted in my district.
Yes, that's, that's not a good number. We want that number to be exponentially higher.
Part of me thinks it's not a good number, but also part of me thinks that it's a good number because it was indicative that the school board, or I mean the. Like everybody was doing a good job. You know what I mean? I feel like the years that we see really big turnouts are the years where things are going fucking sideways, yeah. So like then people.
You mean like, oh, people are like, ah, we gotta rate the ship.
Yeah, we gotta go.
The ship.
I have to get out and vote as opposed to like, oh, you know what, it's not that big of a deal if I don't vote because, and I think everybody should vote, I'm just saying. I think a lot of times, like if not a lot of people are coming out, it's probably because things are going good, you know?
Yeah, no, they, you're, you're right. Like things are skirting along just fine and people are okay. And, and you're right, I mean, if you, if you do contribute to the process in that way by actually voting for people who you feel like. In these nonpartisan positions are going to represent.
Like this interview is guilty. This interview was just a guilty, like, I didn't really have time to look deeply into you. So I'm just like, alright, well, I have this thing. I can, you know, get you to sit down with me for a couple of hours and answer my questions. And like, then I can determine if you're a good voter or not.
And you're sizing me up.
Yeah, so like, to me, this is just like, like it's great for everybody else to be able to watch this too, but like the reason I'm doing this is so that I can understand better.
And you can play.
And I can play Only Up.
Only Up, right.
Which is a very stressful game.
Yeah, I don't, right. I mean, you're right, if you, if you're able to, if you, if you are able to weigh in by voting. For your school board members, your town council, um, you know, great. Because then you can really do feel like you're putting people in charge who are going to make thoughtful decisions. Um, and maybe you don't need to tune in to every little nitty gritty blow by blow for the town council meeting or school, you know.
Right.
School board meeting for this, purposes of this conversation.
I will say, I was joking before, it's not actually boring, like the topics can be boring, but it's actually.
Boring, Nick. You can say it's boring. I think it's not fair.
No, there's parts of it that are fun, like the, like generally when someone gets up there to yell at you guys or like, it can be very dramatic. It's like very, some very dramatic stuff. I definitely think people should enjoy it more. Because it actually is like, it could actually be pretty entertaining.
It can be entertaining, I will give you that too. I also like to, when we highlight something that's going on in the schools. You know, sometimes uh, we have students come in from a particular school to share something that they're working on or teachers share what they've been doing. We had some math specialists come in, talk about their math curriculum and how they are trying to improve math scores in the district. We had Barka School come in there. They do some sort of, maybe you tuned into this one, but they do some sort of like coffee. Carts where they go around to the teachers of Barka and teachers can buy. And it was like about learning math and customer service skills and things like that. And, and it was really kind of cool to see them get excited about that. So yes, it's not all boring and. I don't know, dry, but a lot of it is.
There's a lot of bureaucratic stuff, but there is a lot of it.
Stuff.
Of exciting stuff too, especially when you start to like, you know, understand who people are and what like the actual, you gotta watch it a few times to really get it.
You gotta get the, you gotta know the players in the game.
You gotta understand the format, you kinda gotta understand what's going on, but then once you're invested, it is a lot of fun.
I think what you're highlighting, Nick, is some of it is just, I think there are a few reasons why school board, cause we. We did talk about how you said it was a meat grinder. Um, there are a few things I think that turn people away. And turn people off from wanting to get involved. And one of those things is that it is boring. The other thing is that, as you said, it can be very, very contentious, right? So people can get really upset about decisions that have been made or really concerned about. Situations that are happening in the district and people don't wanna be in the line of fire. It's not fun to sit there and feel like, you know, you're one of seven people and then the SAU leadership is sitting there too. And you're just getting kind of berated, right? Um, I think that that can turn people away, but the problem with that is that it turns sensible people away. From wanting to do the work.
Right, the people who wanna hang out after that.
Exactly, like, I mean, before this whole thing started, Nick, before we were on camera, you called me a nerd and you're a hundred and ten percent right. I actually don't mind doing this stuff.
Super nerd.
Yes, I'm a super nerd and I don't mind doing this stuff.
Like, I remember back when I was in high school, I used to come to the library to hang out. It was so, it's so fun. We would read books quietly together.
Meanwhile.
Meanwhile, I'm thinking about my childhood, I was like, oh yeah, that was a blast. Used to love going to the library.
Different paths. Somehow we both ended up in the same room of the dairy public library.
I just tell people that I was the valedictorian at my school.
I read that once on social media and I actually believed it, so I didn't know if it was true or not, but it sounds like it wasn't.
So like I found, I discovered that there's a bunch of titles that you can just say that no one will actually check into, but are impressive. Like I tell people that I'm Olympic hopeful.
Why not?
Yeah, and everybody's like, oh, and what? And I'll be like curling and they'll be like, wow, really? Nobody looks into that.
No one knows about that one.
And then when they hear about it, next, next time the Olympics are around, they're like, oh, we didn't make it. Maybe next, maybe twenty thirty six, you know?
Is that, I was gonna say, when are the next summer Olympics?
Every, every two years you have alternate.
Yeah, some sort of Olympics.
I think, I think there's one next year, I think. Anywho.
Anywho.
But yeah, so I tell people I'm the valedictorian all the time, nobody ever, nobody ever questions it.
You had, um, there was a question, I think, Nick, that someone wrote you. I saw it on Facebook about, um. I'm gonna look at my piece of paper here.
Questions in a second. This is just the, this was just the.
We're warming up, you know, it's eleven ten, Nick.
Alright, we're gonna blow through, I have twenty questions for you and also I think four people sent in, sent in questions, so.
Questions.
Since you wanna jump ahead.
No, it's just in the interest of time. There's no way we're gonna get, to be clear, you've asked me approximately twelve hundred and thirty six questions.
What was the question that you saw that you wanted to take a swing at?
No, it's not, um, well, someone just wanted to know, so they wrote in and I'll read it. Is that okay if I read it? It says, how does she?
I don't have it written down anywhere, so it's a good thing that you have.
I am now reading the interview. Um, how does she, and you know, she is Jen, so how does Jen feel about NH? Or NHHB four one five, that's a bill. Uh, the bill introduced on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, which aims to remove the requirement. For New Hampshire schools to provide free menstrual products in school bathrooms to students. If it passes, what changes will she advocate for regarding the availability of free menstrual products to students? So that was a question I think somebody wrote. It was public on Facebook, they didn't DM you. Um, I mean. I don't have, you know, this is something like I could, I could weigh in as a member of the public, the way you could too, right?
Which I'm about to.
Um, on this bill, you mean?
Yeah, I'll weigh in as a.
Yeah, I mean, I oppose this bill, right? I oppose the removal of the requirements that New Hampshire schools. Um, provide free menstrual products. So to make that more clear, I support having free menstrual products in schools, right? Um, and I think that that requirement right now is in like, um. Oh gee, I think it's probably in grades like five to twelve, you know, um, it's not in all schools. But I think, I think the grade level might start at five. As you know, now we have one K through four and five to whatever. You know, we need to be supporting that. That is a bill that Governor Sunu had signed into law. Um, back when he was running the show a few years ago. I mean, it's part of our budget.
I think the question essentially is, so what that bill would do would be remove the state funding for it. It would move it to the local funding. It's my understanding, someone had mentioned that like it would just change who's paying for it essentially.
Yep.
So the pay, the money wouldn't come from the state, it would come from local instead.
Dairy taxpayers.
So I think what they're asking is.
You'll see that dairy taxpayers end up paying the bill if state of New Hampshire does not want to. Um, I have a point of tension with that.
As I think most school board, I mean, we can't speak for all the school board, but I do think that the theme in the general talk is really like. Local versus state funding and how, how, whether or not that actually makes a difference. You know, and we won't get into that at this moment, we'll, we'll keep going on this, but I think that.
As it relates to this though, I mean, we would have to then find budget money in our dairy school budget coming from dairy taxpayers. Uh, that, you know, paid for through your local property taxes. And, and I would advocate that we did that, but I would also be opposing this bill so that we don't have to do that. Um, you know, as I did do a little bit of homework on this one, Nick, because that's what I do. And I looked it up, you know, this is something that I think is very unpopular, generally speaking. Most people, I think, support the free.
I mean, I think it's cra- I think it's legitimately.
Have you ever been to a bathroom, Nick, where you could?
Promise you I've never needed.
No, that's not what I was gonna ask. And that's your own business if you needed it, but have you ever been to a bathroom where they charge you for toilet paper?
Yeah, right.
You know, I mean, that seems to be, there is such a thing as, um. The term period poverty, right? Where, where, where young girls or women can't afford to have menstrual products, so.
Well, I think one of the things to, one of the things to look at is just the. You know, who will this actually affect, right? This isn't going to affect parents or te- kids with great parents who have already walked them through all this. Um, and, and have helped them to understand what's happening, have gotten the products they need. The only people that this is going to affect is kids who don't have that, that knowledge. Or the money to, to, to get it. Um, or parents who care.
Yeah.
Um, and so like to me.
And I would say to Nick, I think you said parents who care, I think generally speaking. The vast majority of parents care.
Right.
Whether, whether or not they have like the capacity to show up in those ways, right?
Whether, have, parents who have made it a priority, you're right, I should have. I don't think that, I think most people do care about their kids, even. Even people who from the outside looking in seem like they don't, I think they do care, it's just some people don't have the ability to. Like you said, they don't have the capacity to deal with that. But I just think like, you know, if that's. You know, I mean, how fucking, how much does a tampon cost? A dollar?
Less than that. I don't know exactly. I didn't look that one up. I mean, but yeah, and, and you know, it's, it's, um.
I mean, are we gonna regulate whether or not the nurse gives, you know what I mean? Like, can the nurse give aspirin?
Right.
Right, um, and I mean, I guess we do, they gotta get permission for it, but like, I just can't imagine like a kid goes to with this. To the nurse with a scraped knee and they're not allowed to have a Band-Aid because, you know, the state won't pay for it. That just seems ridiculous. And so I, to me, this is silly.
That this isn't gonna actually go anywhere, Nick. I don't think it's going to. I think that this is probably pretty unpopular. And I find it to be incredibly unpopular. Um, and I think too, you know, there are scenarios too. I don't think there's a woman among us who hasn't been in a scenario where like, oh my gosh, I need access to a menstrual product and I do not have one. For whatever reason, even if it's just because you just forgot or don't have something with you. Um, so it's, it can be a difference between having a really good day if there's something in there. Or having a really weird and awkward day, right?
I told, I told you this story before, uh, starting, but, um, you know, I have a daughter. We, I use the family restroom when I go out and the other, I went to the one in Coles a little while ago and there was a.
It's a nice one, I think.
There was a, yeah. They're big enough for a stroller. There was a, uh, there was a vending machine in there that I had never seen and I was thinking, what the? They're handing out snacks in the bathroom? What is going on? And it was like, you could pay ten cents and you could get like a tampon or a, or a pad.
Ten cents is, I, I would suspect it's more than that, but yeah, point taken. Like you can buy, you can buy it through the vending machine.
This is, this is like, if you're desperate enough to need a tampon from a public restroom vending machine, I feel like you deserve to just have a tampon. Like I can't, I can't imagine that you're doing that out of anything but desperation.
I think you had said too, cause you had told me this before we started recording, that you left some change behind, which is always nice. It reminds me of when I like go to Market Basket and there's like two quarters sitting on the carousel. That happens occasionally.
Such a different, such a different scenario though.
Somebody wants to spark joy, right?
Fat kid, so like when I see that someone left quarters in the quarter machine, I'm like, God, God, you know, thank you so much. It's like a miracle. I could imagine, although I guess it would probably kind of be a miracle in that situation too, but very different, uh, I'm sure it's a very different reaction. More of like, just absolute relief, you know?
Right.
But yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I, but yeah, my understanding was that it'll just change who pays for it, the state or the, or the local.
I'm sure that is the case. I'm, I'll be honest, I did not read the bill, so.
I'm pretty sure that's, that's essentially, well, I think it would remove the, the necessary, but the, the idea is that. The locals would all see it as necessary and would just keep doing it anyways.
Well, that's kind of what's been happening in general, right? Because the less you fund at the state level, the more your local tax goes up. And we all believe strongly ninety percent of the kids in town get educated through public schools. And we wanna see public schools thrive and we're willing to pay for that to happen. And so. We're seeing some downshifting though from the state, which is a, a real problem, I think, Nick. A real problem.
There's a lot of confusion over funding, so why don't we just get into that for a little bit? We had, I did have someone else on my podcast a little while ago. I've actually had a couple of people who talked about it, but it's swift funding. Um, which is a cent swept.
Statewide education property tax.
You send, this town sends, the, the original idea was every town. And city and whatever in the state would all send money to this one general fund. Um, and then everybody would get, then get it dished out as per the need. And what's happening, what happened, that's how it was really set up. And then the change happened somewhere where instead of.
Twenty twelve or so.
Instead of sending it to the people who need it, you just send your money in and then they send you the exact same amount, right, right back.
We'll take it and you can have it back, yeah. So you're talking about the, um, and state funding, okay. So to be clear, funding for public schools in New Hampshire. Is kind of complicated, right? It's, it's.
Actually, you know what, before, I'm sorry, let me, before we get into that, the one thing I really wanted to have explained is like. Can you just outline what the actual job of the school board is? Like what are the things that you guys are actually in control of? And what are the things that, that maybe you see people blaming you guys for that you have no control over?
Control over. Um, okay, so not just dairy school boards, school boards in general. I, in my view, have three functions. We have one employee that we can hire and fire, and that is the superintendent. So the board oversees the hiring process of the superintendent and we hold the superintendent accountable to doing his or her job, okay? The day to day functioning of the school district is really. The superintendent's job to oversee, okay? Um, so like the nitty gritty, finer details of what happens day to day at school, the board really doesn't have anything to do with, okay? That's not to say that it, you know, we, we don't want good things happening. It's just that the super, that's the superintendent's job. He's running, he or she, and I'm saying he, because currently it is a man in that role, um, he's, he oversees that role. The other thing that the school board does, so that's number one. Number two. The school board alongside the district administration and leadership develops the school budget. So the school board ultimately approves the school budget. District leadership, at least in the, the process that we went through in Derry, creates the budget, presents the budget. And then we discuss what may or may not fit into our budget or what we want to have fit into the budget based on things like taxpayer, you know. Um, concerns. So school budget, we would approve the school budget and sit through and develop that process. Um, and then district policy, right? So if you go online to sauten.org, I think is the website. Or for our SAU, you can go to like the school board tab and then there's going to be a whole laundry list of policies. That the school board has helped develop alongside again, SAU, um, leadership. So school policies are developed by, and approved by the, um, school board. I think that's.
That's like the scope of your job.
That's the scope of my job and I am, and it's a seven person board, so I'm one of seven votes, right? I really don't have, Jen Thoreau, doesn't really have any power by herself. It's really alongside the board.
Yep, and they're like, my child learned. You know, what, like.
You're gonna ask me something wacky, aren't you?
No, I'm just saying like you don't have any control over like what, like what an individual teacher does in any given classroom. You have no control whether or not like a teacher, uh, sends home a list, uh, like a curriculum or not. You have no control over like, really anything other than the, the budget. And you don't really even have control of the money coming in, you just have control over what the money is spent on. You have control over hiring the superintendent, whose job it is to basically oversee everything.
Yep.
And you have control over that policy you were talking about.
Yep.
And what kind of things would you see on that policy?
Uh, I mean, if you pull it, anything from like, you know, how students, you know, safety procedures at school. I mean, I could pull it up. There's, anyone could go online and look through the, um, the policy book. Uh, is that what you're gonna do? So you're pulling it up. There's a whole slew of policies, you know, anything from like how we deal with head lice at school.
I don't have internet, so no.
Maybe I will then.
No, it's okay, you go, keep, you keep talking.
You know, anything from like how we deal with head lice at school. What's an emergency procedure or protocol look like? Let me see here. Do I have internet?
So you just have like the overlying rules of, of what?
What guides the day to day.
But you have no control over the individual. But you have no control over the individual actions of people who then look at that policy and interpret it.
You know, so here we are, we, if you pull it up on the SAU website, it's under School Board Policy and Procedures, there's a whole list of.
Right.
You know, they have it listed as section A through L.
Um, but I guess basically what I'm saying is you don't have any control over what individuals who read this then interpret it as.
No.
So, you guys set this and then that's the job of the of the superintendent and whoever else needs this um, to then go in and and interpret it to then, you know what I mean?
And that's not to say that people can't reach out and, you know, with a concern, like I'm really upset about my child's teacher, um, I think the job of the school board member then would be to make sure that that person gets the appropriate resources and is heard in ways like to be an advocate for, you know, a parent. Because I think there isn't anybody on the school board, at least currently, who wasn't willing to listen to any concern that a parent has about anything, um.
I just wanted to be clear of what the actual job is, like what do you guys actually?
I don't make imprint money, it'd be easier if I did, um, you know, I don't, I'm not there every day, I go to a lot of meetings. We have a lot of discussions, um, lots of things happen in committee work.
So, what kind of control do you guys have over like, for instance, the curriculum? Um, and how do you guys, like, do you have any control over what the individual curriculum is? Um, and if so, how do you sort of balance what is traditionally we see versus what is sort of like, what's coming next, you know, like the new
Sure.
Sort of new rules, et cetera.
Um, well, I'm wrapping my arms around that one right now, part of what I wanted to accomplish yesterday and what I did start to accomplish with um, Kim Conan yesterday, again, I referenced her earlier, she's the director of curriculum in the SAU office. Um, there is a committee, of course, that works on curriculum issues. Um, there are a couple of school board members on that right now, I'm not a member of that committee right now. But I suspect that might be coming down the bike for me, um, and you know, you work alongside Kim um, and Mr. Joe Crawford, who, whose job it is is to make sure that the curriculum is being followed in the district. Um, a lot of districting and district programming and curriculum, you know, again, has to be written into a school budget, so what I was concerned about yesterday when I met with Kim was asking her about curriculum and how um and making sure it's evidence-based, okay? Um, it's not just some random thing that somebody, some teacher in the district found online and thought sounded good, so we're gonna teach a kid how to read with that. Making sure it's really been vetted and that's evidence-based, um, making sure that it's uniform across the district, right? So, that means if your child goes to South Range and my kid is at EDMES, that they're learning to read from an evidence-based program that um is being followed with fidelity and that is being consistent with between those two schools, you know, we're not having South Range teach reading one way and then have East Derry teach another, Grinnell, you know, et cetera, et cetera, we want that to be uniform across the district. Um, and then again too, you know, one of the concerns that we discussed yesterday and the reason I think we we sort of started to touch upon this was um, oftentimes, people get really upset and concerned about test scores. And I'm concerned about test scores too, we had this presentation at the last school board meeting. Um, Ms. Conan and Mr. Crawford presented district test scores, which really need, I think, to be improved. Um, and a lot of times when that needs to be improved, we're thinking and trying to work through what's an appropriate curriculum so that our students are you know, reading, doing math and all that at grade level. We talk about reading and writing and um, doing math at grade level, really what that means is like the NWA. You you know, the NWA is the the national assessment, um, which kids take three times a year. Um, and so, I'm not, am I being, am I answering your question? I don't even remember what it was exactly, it's.
It was just, what kind of control do you guys have over the actual curriculum? And how do you wanna balance like what's coming with, or like the future of of education with you know, how education has been traditionally?
I mean, you know, Kim's the curriculum expert, that's what she's been hired to do in the district, so am I gonna tell Kim how to do her job? No, not necessarily, I don't think so, but we are gonna work alongside each other. My hope would be that in the, you know, next couple of years, we can prioritize curriculum so that it's doing all those things that I just listed. So, it's that it's empowering teachers to teach an evidence-based curriculum with fidelity across all the schools in the town. Um, so that we're making that meaningful to how they're being assessed, which currently is with like the NWA exam and SAS, the state, the state assessment. Um, I don't know if you remember taking that, I remember taking that exam in third grade.
I do remember taking.
Way back in the day.
I don't really remember.
And I mean.
School's a little bit of a blur for me.
Yeah, we won't go back into that, um, and you know, whether or not kids feel like they're um, invested in doing well on an assessment, that could be part of too of why we're seeing students not performing all that well, but I I do feel strongly that we need to improve our test scores and that we need to make sure that we have a curriculum um, that's making gainful means, or meaningful gains, I suppose, in that, in that realm, so. I'm not sure I know quite enough about how the district operates on the curriculum front yet to really be able to understand that, but let me tell you, Nick, the theme here today, Jen is willing to do her homework on it, so, um, you know, I had a productive meeting with Kim yesterday. Um, again, with the time constraints that I have, having to go get my son um, from preschool. Uh, same time constraint today, we'll meet up again, Kim was.
Don't worry, I'll let you, I'm gonna let you get out of here.
No, I'm not, I'm not worried about that, but Kim was really wi- willing to um, to meet with me again and I, I know that I will. If not, certainly not this week, it won't happen, but in the come, in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure that we'll sit down again. Um, and part of it's just me trying to get a lay of the land, so.
Um, would you, so you talked about how you have a pretty substantial history with in dealing with mental health and also with homelessness and that kind of thing, um. We are in the middle of, you know, a pretty extremely bad housing crisis with more homeless people um, in New Hampshire than maybe ever before. A big part of that is that it's not single people anymore, a lot of it is family units. Um, I know, at least as of a couple of years ago, these numbers might have changed, but Pinkerton had a homeless child population of about two hundred. Um, how, what role do you think schools should play in um, helping students who maybe don't have, you know, whether, not only a home, but maybe like support? Um, you know, schools sort of get a lot dumped on them, you know, of where, as far as like.
Yes, and you know what you mean.
You know what I mean, um, and so like, how, what do you think the role of school is in supporting people like that?
Um, I mean, I think that there are protections in place, I mentioned the McKinney-Vento Act, you know? Meaning if a family becomes homeless in a particular district, that child is able to maintain um, learning in the public schools of that district, even if it means they're unstablely housed and like living at grandma's house a town or two over, okay? Um, and so, there are protections in place. I do think that schools are being asked to do more and more and more beyond just the basic education of a child. Um, which makes it difficult, I think, at times to to make all those ends meet. I'll say that as a social worker, my job was always to advocate for the people that couldn't sit at the table.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't know if I have a nuts and bolts answer to that question, Nick, as much as I do will say that I plan to be an advocate for people who are disenfranchised and on the margins and have difficulty making ends meet in or in the dairy schools, because I see that as something that I can make a difference in that realm, um. Not sure that that's a good enough answer for you, but.
Whatever answer you wanna give is a good enough answer for me.
Cause I don't know if I know, I I'm not sure I fully understand or can appreciate quite yet um, the scope of the problem. Um.
Well, I think the problem is going to continue to get worse too.
Oh, sure, it will.
It's sort of, it's sort of, um.
You probably know more about the housing crisis than I do, Nick.
Expected to contin- the housing crisis continued to not only uh, continue but get significantly worse over the next ten years. Um, and so we'll be seeing a lot more of that unfortunately, and so I was just curious sort of what you felt school's role was outside of just like teaching math, science and English? And how you, how, you know, committed you were to to taking care of those kids that maybe didn't have those uh, didn't have those things in place.
I mean, one of the things too, cause as as you're asking me that and I'm, we're thinking about the budget in the background as well and obviously trying to help students who, who really need the additional support. Uh, I'm not sure if you know this, but you probably know the term base adequacy in New Hampshire, okay, so every the state of New Hampshire does provide uh, base adequacy, which is like a pure pupil cost that gets contributed to um, public schools. I think right now it's like forty-four hundred dollars for a student. Costs about nineteen thousand and some change right now in the Dairy School District to educate a child, a regular education. Um, and by regular education, I mean not special education or an out-of-district placement. Um, if a child uh qualifies for free or reduced lunch, that's an additional money that the state then pays the district. Um, and so it kind of relates to this whole conversation as well, because we obviously want these kids to be eating food while they're at school, right? Um, and we also want to be able to be maximizing our budget to the po- the greatest possible uh extent that we can from the state. And if we have kids completing, by kids, I mean, I suppose their parents or guardians, completing that free or reduced lunch application even if they don't take it and they actually qualify, um, we're getting an additional, I think, twenty-four hundred dollars, yeah. Um, in support, that doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up big time, right?
Extrapolate that to two hundred kids.
Yeah, exactly, that's a lot of money that we're, we're trying to find in the budget and I'm sure that there are um you know, children and families out there who qualify, who maybe haven't been able to go through that process for whatever reason and that we're, we're not getting that money. And they may be not eating or not using their budget thoughtfully from a home standpoint, because they're paying for money at money for schools lunch, so.
So, one of the big.
All the problems are connected, Nick, I don't know if you're noticing that theme too.
They are connected, um, so, one of the things that is important to me is special education. Um, how does special education affect the budget? So, for anyone who doesn't know, Derry has a higher than average number of special needs students, we receive less federal funding um than is average. And I'm actually gonna be having the um, the one of the big special needs advocacy groups on in a, in a month or so.
Who? Is it Able, New Hampshire?
No, it is, I can't, so mad that I can't remember who it is, it's New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators.
Okay.
Um, and I'm gonna be having them on on the nineteenth, actually, um, to discuss this, but special education costs no longer, so, couple of things have changed, one is that like special education now means essentially like anyone with any sort of need outside of um, I think it used to kind of be more like extreme examples of people who needed assistance. Um, whereas now it's just kind of like if your child needs additional help with reading, that's now like part of.
Like has an IEP?
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't exactly know, that's why I brought on, that's why I'm bringing on people who are smarter than me to talk about it.
Okay.
Um, but I, I guess I just wanna know, like, how does special education play into the budget? Um, how does like the increased number of IEPs over the years affect the budget? Um, where's that money coming from? Can you just kind of give me a general overlay of like, how that affects the school budget and what your job will be in that?
Well, you're right that um, Derry has a higher than average, higher than like the state average um, percentage of students that have an IEP, so the purposes of our conversation, special education means.
Anyone with an IEP.
Anyone with an IEP in the dairy public schools, right? Um, and so, that does cost additional money out of the budget, um, because those students are qualifying for services that go beyond what we call regular education. Um, and so and you asked how, you know, how does that affect the budget, the state also contributes some money for that. I don't even wanna get into that, Nick, because I don't know the fine details of what the state's contributing to.
Well, I can tell you that.
It's been decreasing, I know that.
Been increasing significantly since twenty twenty-one, they have not increased the special education budget. Um, and we're now looking at a fifty million dollar shortfall, I believe.
Deficit in the state.
Across the, across the board. Um, I believe it's to- grand total is like the, the state won't be paying fifty million dollars um, between all the, all the towns and cities, but that number has been decreasing um significantly, so every year when inflation goes up that number, they've kept it at the same amount since twenty twenty-one.
How did you know that, Nick?
Well, cause I have very, um, that's like, and to me, special education is very important, obviously my son has an IEP. Um, and so I've just kept up on it.
Yeah, okay, um, I know that, and maybe for some of the people listening they wonder too, like, this is not just a, it is a federally, you know, guaranteed right, that special education uh, kids who have special education needs are um guaranteed a free and appropriate public education, right? Um, FAP, F A P E, Free and Appropriate Public Education, that idea came down from IDEA.
So, this is, so.
Am I being tangential here?
Nope, so I, so the idea, idea was passed around nineteen sixty, um, and the goal was that.
Was it sixty?
Yeah, it was in the sixties, so basically they decided that people with special needs were human beings and that they would start treating them such and they would give them a fair education, yeah, they would give them a fair education.
I mean, right, but what a wild concept, I guess, my.
Right, I mean, at the time.
What a wacky concept, right?
They determined that, you know, people with special needs deserve to be treated like everybody else and that they would receive federal funding. The federal government said that they would pay forty percent of the mandate. Um, and then immediate was like, we're not fucking paying that, and they pay now on average accro- across the country is like fifteen percent.
Yeah, it's never been fully realized.
In Derry, New Hampshire, they pay, I wanna say, eleven percent.
Okay.
So, we have a higher than average.
Those numbers seem to math alright.
Average of, a higher than average amount of special needs students and we receive less assistance from the federal government who promised to pay forty percent of it. Uh,
I mean, I guess the point that I'm highlighting and bringing that up, Nick, is like, we have these ideas, IDEA um, that haven't been fully realized, right, and it's at the national level and the state level. And the reality of how it plays out, I guess, on the local level is our budget gets really squeezed, right?
Sorry, I sounded like I got mad there, I just. I wasn't taking that on you and that was nothing to do with you.
I mean, I'm happy that you're passionate about it, because I'm right there with you, it's part of the reason to go bring it, to circle it all the way back, that I feel called to do this, I have a child that has an IEP. Um, I have a child that qualifies for services in school. Um, it frustrates me to no end that, you know, IDA was never IDEA was never fully realized and that we're still trying to make that a reality, that that our state funding has decreased. I think the, I think it was nine hundred thousand dollars that the dairy schools missed out on from the state this particular budget year for special education. Now, the way that that plays out on a um you know, how does that, like, where does the rubber meet the road, road and how does that look in reality? Um, of course, we're not gonna be like, hey, you, you don't get an IEP anymore. It just means that maybe services then become a little bit more watered down, right, like um, how do we provide these services in schools but with, for example, um, para educators? How do we provide these services in schools, whether or not we get to contract with a um with employees that provide speech and occupational therapy and things like that, or do we have a district employee to do those things, right? Um, and and so it comes down to the quality of the services that are being provided. Um, there was a concerning bill, I think, that was spoken about yesterday at the state level, I don't know the name of the bill number, I could easily look it up, but I'm, don't think I'm going to in the interest of time. It was about um, changing the definitions of special education, did you see that at all, Nick? Okay, so, I mean, again, it, it feels like an attack on special education, because it's just a watering down of what it means to have special education and what it means to provide those services. Um, well, last I knew, I mean, I logged into uh, voiced my opposition for that bill online um, through the like New Hampshire uh, House Portal, which you can do. Um, if anybody's that's listening is kind of like, what is she talking about? I have no idea. Um, if this means anything to you and you feel like there might be decisions being made at the state level that you somehow disagree with, particularly on the education front, I'd absolutely be thrilled to talk to anybody that wants to talk to me about how to be an advocate just in of themselves and voicing opposition for a bill, it literally takes two minutes. You log on, you put where you live, your name, and you can write in about a bill that you oppose, okay? Um, and yesterday it was about, there was a hearing about a- again, watering down what it means to be, in my opinion, it's watering down, I mean, I'm sure that there's somebody out there who has some sort of what they might call rational reason for wanting to do this, but um, you know, if we weaken what it means to have special education and special education services, then we can find ways to then not fund it.
Right.
And that to me is a real problem.
Good. Good. I mean, I think it's a real problem too, and I would like to see um, those things change. Unfortunately, we're out of time. Um, I appreciate you coming down and sitting with me today. I've probably talked too much about you personally and didn't get to as many questions as people would have liked. But I think, uh, you know, I really like what you had to say. I really find it. You know, thank you for stepping up and being willing to do, you know, walk into the meat grinder.
I love the meat grinder, Nick. We're gonna get, I think we're gonna team up probably and at some point over something. And you'll just find that I like to walk into it, so. Yeah, I appreciate being here today, Nick.
Is there any final message you'd like to leave everybody with?
Uh, the final message would be to vote on March eleventh in the Dairy Town election. Certainly vote for Jen Thoreau for her three-year school board seat. I will be on the ballot for that. Um, also go out and support the initiatives that the skirt Dairy School Board is putting forth. Definitely support the capital improvements bond. Way back at the beginning of the conversation, we talked about how dairy schools need to be repaired.
Probably should've talked about that more.
Yeah, that's a
That's alright.
Part two. But yes, get out and vote, please. It's your, it's your right. Do it.
Um, and just last question, I know I gotta go, but is there one, is there one thing that like the average person can do that would have like if they could just change one habit and that would have an outsized effect on sort of our school district as a whole, what would you have them do?
Like as a parent?
As anybody, any human being who, who wants to see a positive change in the school district and doesn't know where to start.
I think we're just, I would love to see more involvement, you know, um, whether that means logging into a school board meeting, kind of learning what the players are like in that game. Showing some interest in that realm, going to a PTA meeting, going to an event at the kids' school. Just being part of the dairy school community, I think, is really important.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here today. Guys, thank you for watching. I hope that you got what you needed out of it.